I re-convene the regular meeting at, what do we have, six? The Board is returning from executive session where matters leading to the employment of particular people and the employment history of a particular person were discussed. Very pleased rise for the fledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You want to remember Jeanie Bunk's during this. He was a long-term colleague. He received the school that has him. Thank you. An emergency evacuation announcement. May I have your attention for a brief announcement? Upon fire alarm activation, immediate evacuation to the closest emergency exit is required. The emergency exits are located back there. Please exit away from the building as so as not to interfere with the fire department proceeding to the evacuation areas. Please follow the school officials' direction. Once assembled outside the building, everyone must wait until the school gives the all-clear before we enter into the building. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Robert Zachary-Effley.
Yes.
Rodney C. Pearson. Lumi Proctor. Suni Sherwood-Dublin. Here. Jermaine L. Smith.
Here.
Laura White.
Here.
Ruth B. White.
Does the clerk have any additions or delusions to the agenda?
There have been no additions or delusions to the agenda.
On President's comments here, the Board of Education will hold a regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, August 19th, immediate following a public carrying of the district-wide safety plan at 6:30 in the intermediate school. I also want to announce that fall sports are starting soon, so please get out and get everybody registered if you're playing sport. They're doing physicals. Let's say I want to talk, so we're all wearing the gray ribbon tonight because we have a first grader who's going to second grader, six-year-old Scarlett Perry, who was diagnosed with brain cancer a few months ago. So she had surgery to remove most of the tumor. She actually goes to the city yesterday to start her chemo and radiation, so staying strong. We had a car wash this weekend where I think you guys were able to raise over $10,000 for just in one day, which is great. I know the principal was there, Ally Hobson was there, Toni Cruz is a madman out there with the hose and her kids, Joanne Philo was there. Am I missing anybody else? Lot of kids, lot of kids out there is great. And there's also a GoFundMe that's been going around because the families can be renting an apartment because they have to stay in the city during the time for her treatment and stuff, so any school we can give them to the Perry families. It's online, yeah, I'm sure we did share the GoFundMe for parents where for everybody, which would be great. So I just want to thank the community. We raised a lot of money. You know, John went some and kids, a few of the brother Easton and sister Maddie in there. They're a great family. So I got, we're going to move on to the swearing-in of our student board members. So will the clerk please administer the oath of office for Noah Kent Savera? Welcome aboard. We're very excited to have you guys. So we're going to go into program presentation. We've got the Yale University study, which is, Dr. Morrell here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, community. It would like great honor and pleasure to introduce two Yale University scholars, Dr. Batel and Dr. Cutter, who has done a years-long study of Indigenous practices, education, outcomes, and promise for the future in our district with our staff members and our community members and our Chinacook Nation. That has also been done, led collaboratively with our Director of Education, Ms. Denise Williams, who's also here for this presentation. And I know we have another contract this year and we're looking for a contract in year three, but for this year, the Board would like had questions, wanted to know about some of the findings of your report and also what are the next steps for your work here under our contract? I don't know if Denise would like to add or ask them? No? So at this time, without further ado, I would like to present Dr. Cutter and Dr. Batel from Yale University.
What's to go with the podium, please? Power's on, but I'm not sure that's, okay, sounds good.
Usually we go with an introduction, just so you know who we are in a bit about what we do over at the university. So my name's Dr. Chris Cutter. Good to know you all. Thank you for having us here. My colleague, post-colleague, Dr. Mark Batel. So my initial training is a counseling psychologist. I was trained out of the Harvard Medical System and my fact, oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, sorry about that. I'll do the introduction again. So my, just so you know who we are, my initial, so I'm a counseling psychologist by training and my training start is finalized over the Harvard Medical School system, mainly through the hospital system, McLean Hospital. And then my postdoctoral fellowship and faculty over at the Yale School of Medicine, both in internal medicine, division of substance abuse, and now the Child Study Center, where I'm now senior teaching training faculty. A little while ago, Dr. Batel and I designed and started Yale's first Native American mental health program, which is essentially a community mental health program. I was a dean over at Yale, the Assistant Dean of Yale College and Director and one of the founders of the Native American Cultural Center over there, which we're quite proud of. But what we have taken on for close to, we're going close to at this point over a decade, specifically focusing on community mental health in Indigenous populations, whether it's rural or urban. So we're usually around the country doing this work quite often. And then we're teaching on this. We're trying to increase a pipeline in the university of having folks do this style of work. First and foremost, we're behavioral scientists. We do appreciate counseling process, the mental health, teaching, and training component of it. I run four residential adolescent treatment facilities in addition to 7,000 other things. All right, all jokes aside, for this main project, we do take one large project every three to five years to put all of our attention and focus on. So whether it takes us different parts of the United States. We got approached by Denise for this particular project of taking a look at, is there anything we can do to assist the Indigenous community over in the Southampton School District? And we wanted to take a closer look. So we did, we did start our process after speaking with the previous superintendent. And we did get a green light to take a look at, first, before you see if you can do any improvements, you have to do a needs assessment and find out from the community what they want and what do they see. And it's usually the first step of any very good clinical trial that you would do, take a look at who is doing the work first before you even decide to start doing any additional work. Otherwise, you just kind of add some unnecessary intervention that might not fit. So we're going to start off part of this presentation, by the way, do I have 15, 20 minutes? I just want to make sure we don't want to go over on time. 15? Done and done. We're going to start off on what are the key findings we found and what are the next steps moving forward to actually design a very strong lasting intervention that's not too intrusive to teachers, but that's also quite helpful for the community, for community health. I want to reinforce that that this is not just Indigenous help, this is for community health. So I'm taking away, give it to Dr. Batel, who's going to kind of walk you through our initial findings and some of the questions we asked.
Thanks, Chris. Hi, I'm Mark Batel. I'm a clinical psychologist. I've been on the faculty at Yale for more than 20 years and I essentially measure things. And I'm very interested in measuring programs and processes. And we're here in your remarkable district because Dr. Dino thought that we could make a contribution. It seems that you've got a lot of strengths. We've gotten to know you all over the past year. We did 31 interviews with school staff members. We did 31 interviews with Chinacook Nation members, and, which is a tremendous amount of interviewing to do. So we're starting to get a sense that there are a lot of strengths and there is some interesting texture in this district. And so Dr. Dino thought we ought to be looking at that texture and looking to optimize things. And so that is the reason why we're standing before you today. And I will direct your attention to the slide.
It might be a little hard to see, so we'll walk you through as best we can. I'm sorry, it's a little larger.
To summarize, these are key informant interviews. That is, we wanted to talk to stakeholders in the community, all kinds of people at all different levels to get their sense of what the strength and the growth edges might be. And I'll begin with school climate. And I should say, across the district interviews and the nation interviews, there was a, am I not moving up? There was a lot of, a lot of agreement and consistency, which I think is super interesting. District folks characterized the school climate as generally positive, but they noticed that where there's some negative issues and some people had kind of a mixed assessment. Nation members had a more negative appraisal, then positive, and then mixed. And so one of the issues becomes, well, how do we improve the communication between the nation and the district? And what the district people said was increase meeting frequency, right? It's hard to make changes unless people are talking to one another. More open and honest communication and increased professional development. On the nation side, they said increase improved communication, increase transparency, and increase response time. And so what are the steps? How do we get there? What are the short-term goals, medium-term goals, and long-term goals to make sure that this very good district is functioning optimally? Short-term goals on the district side, improve communication, make changes to the curriculum. And then there was a small subset of people who said, make no changes at all, things are just going well. On the nation side, it says increase cultural awareness, increase Chinacook inclusion and representation, recognize different learning styles, increase parent involvement. All short-term goals. What do we do in the medium term? From the district member's point of view, improve communication, make changes to the curriculum. On the nation side, increase inclusion and representation, increase academic support, increase post-secondary planning, increase cultural awareness, increase culture, professional development. Then what do we do in the long term? On the district side, improve communication, make changes to the curriculum, increase professional development. On the nation side, increase academic support, increase post-secondary planning, increase teacher diversity. And if we were to be able to work some of these things out and get to optimization, it's very likely that this could, two things could happen. One, we could really create a national model for how to work within ethno-racially complex district and thrive. And critically, how do we provide teacher training and training to all the way throughout the whole school at all levels? Clinicians, paraprofessionals? How do we include the kind of training that sophisticates everyone so that all votes rise? That's essentially the goal. So those are the findings. Dr. Cutter can tell us a little bit about what this coming year will bring.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Okay, so usually when we're taking a look thoroughly at a community and the community's perspective on what needs to be done, when we start designing intervention, let's say for example, you're going to design a new therapy. We're not saying that here because there's going to be realistic, simple, elegant teaching training modules. They're going to differ between teacher staff all the way down to mental health training staff. But remember, we do have elementary, we have intermediate, and we have high, so those will be different. So the planning on these is quite thorough and we have been doing this for quite a while, but the best way it does work for a community-based research perspective is you get the community's input on every step of the way. So there's a lot of genius and intelligence in this room and we have to capitalize it because you know your community better than we do. We can just add on what we think is the right, like one of the better ways to implement this and how we also consider definitely design for our student population. So typically what it looks like here for one year, for year one, we'll go to key deliverables on year one, is instead of going the second year, the second year I'll kind of give you a broad brush stroke when we get toward the end, is there's quite a bit of planning, but there also has to be oversight and accountability. So that means a lot of close contact with our superintendent, Dr. Morrell, and also with Board of Education members as well. So there has to be a lot of good dialogue because if we're operating in a vacuum, it's going to seem confusing or that you have no input in this and that it doesn't really help us design the intervention. So we're finishing up our final community needs assessment where we found the first part of it is a lot of the elder members of tribal community would like to talk more about their experience and I think that's just a good service to do. After that's wrapped up, we go right into designing and planning the interventions. Sorry, I'm going to slow here. So as we design, there's going to be a lot of back and forth. So we are starting late September, October on that, that part of the study design. When it says series of intervention and construction meetings, this is quite a bit. These can be either in-person or via Zoom. We want to make sure that we're very helpful and conservative with the budget, so we tend not to do a lot of overnight stay here. Southampton's quite expensive. It'll eat the travel budget in two seconds, so we tend to drive overnight and leave the same night, which is fun. I didn't realize coming here in the summer is going to be that thing. All right. Jeez Louise. All right. So then I'll sprinkle throughout, there is monthly and bimonthly meetings between the Chinacook and the Southampton Board and also with our superintendent. Now, as we go through the design, the design, the design, we're hoping by getting approval by the winter months. And then we go right into that, we have to go, as soon as we get approval, we go right to training. Now, training is typically a difficult process. We do a lot of mentoring near us with a lot of clinicians and a lot of teachers. So this is not the kind of like, hey, let's just do a seminar and good, congratulations, you're certified. To do an intervention quite well, there has to be sustainability on it and the training has to feel that it was interesting and important and that it will be woven into what has been done. So as we do that, we have to do consistent supervision meetings. As we go into that, that's going to be basically the end of year one. Hence, by the end of year two, there has to be something to avoid something called drift. And we talk about that in the scientific community, even you might have it in the education community as well, is if we drift from the original source that we designed and created together, we start having an intervention that doesn't look like it's supposed to look and people are kind of just really, really doing what they want. We have a big problem with this in therapy. Some people say they do a certain intervention and it's not, and I'm not sure if anybody's ever come to therapy in here, but there's some very good therapists out there and there's some really lousy ones too. So we kind of don't want that to go. So year two is a lot of, not only keeping drift, but teaching the trainers to train so you don't need us anymore, that you are kind of existing with this model, this national, hopefully this national model, that not only can be spread to Indian country, but the greater good is like if you had an ethno-racial diverse community, this would be a nice model to implement and this would be a Southampton model. So that's kind of the broad brush strokes for year one and two. That's our, we want to leave some time for questions.
So at this time, if there are any questions regarding the work of Yale with our district community, you can have those questions now?
Hopefully it makes sense. I was making sure it was clear that it wasn't in the jargon.
Open up to anybody in the audience that has a question as well right now.
Hi, just briefly, as a parent in the community, for a number of years, my eldest graduated five years ago and I presently have a daughter, a sorority junior. One of the things I'm curious about, communication is really important, you nailed it. And that said, over the years, I think communication has happened where a number of people within the community not actually feeling heard. And so I'm wondering about how that action gets implemented with the model.
So that's a fantastically good question and I don't have a quick, easy answer for that. The, I think that the community will teach us as we, as we dig in and we get to know you all better, we'll have a better sense of the history and we'll figure out how do we avoid the repetitions in the past that have plagued the district? It's similar being both psychologist. It's similar to what happens in a good psychotherapy or good consultation where you start to figure out, but okay, if there's communication but something went wrong, what exactly was it? We don't know yet, but we will hope to figure that out. So thank you for the question.
I'll jump on that as well. So part of like the job I had to do when I was being mentored by Dr. Batel a while ago, but I had the dirty job of running every one of the studies, so I had to do all the logistics. So part of it is we have to kind of plug and play in connection with the community exactly where does it fit in logistically, when communication touch points have to be built in. So the model hasn't been created because that's part of the fun of this, is creating it together. We will give a blueprint of what we think is really, really strong. And I actually like getting feedback, oh, that's not going to work. And here's why. And that's those are the discussions that are quite important to have to design a really good one that matches this community. Thank you for the question.
Good questions, your comments.
Yeah, so year one, you studied, year two, you guys are going to kind of have the models and stuff by the fall and starting in design. And then year three, it's kind of like a train the trainers, is that?
Yeah, so by the end of year two, right now, we should start the training already.
Okay.
Because we have to get the feedback, what people like and don't like as well. And then by year three, we should have like a really finely tuned model that we all really like and that we believe in. And then it's train the trainer, then I think it's depending on the community, who they want to be trained.
And I know with like group supervision stuff, like how many trainers are, do you think are necessary? Like, are you looking at like one per five staff member, one per 10? Like, what's your, you still weighing that out a little bit?
Ratio is a good question. So if, so like, for example, when I have like an easy one, I think Dr. Batel should talk, Mark should talk about the school one. For therapy, I do need one to five, depending on the intervention, like if it's really intensive. So like say for adapting a trauma-informed intervention for the Port Mojave Reservation, very, very highly resourced reservation, but they just want to up the work that they do. But to get somebody refining such a really intense intervention, I need more face time with them, I need weekly supervision. But if it's something more along the lines of like, if it's brief intervention and just kind of going over things or like important touch points, I could do one to 10. Or there might be just one person per school if we really get good going that, and that's somebody's portion of their salary support goes toward that.
Okay. And then a period, it's a three-year plan.
Yes.
And we get going and the one thing I feel like is districts, if we don't want to set it all up, train, get it going, and then after like a year or two, it kind of dies out. Is there, there's ongoing like supervision for our trainers that we'll go to? I think as things change, is that something that you guys continue to do? Is that something they would go like once every two months for a training or?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we do not want to come in and commit the sin of spending a little time and then just completely disappearing. So we are happy to be around, even in a much more limited way, for this foreseeable future. We're really committing to this district primarily because we think it's fantastically interesting and we think you have all kinds of opportunities here.
Great. One thing else, oh, sorry, God.
I just have a question. You guys mentioned the word drifting.
Yeah.
So if there were to be a drift, well, number one, would we have to basically bait a drift? And then if there were to be one, what would be the plan to?
Yeah, it's an excellent question and actually it's become, it's actually very similar to LB?
Probably Zach.
So it's kind of like a, historically what university has done is just said, hey, look what I can do, and they publish it and they leave. And it's happened constantly in Indian country, it's happened a ton in a lot of other of our minoritized communities or just folks that have a really tough time. Same things happen, especially rural Appalachia as well. So the key importance is that, that year three is what I love, that year three. We really have a big importance of like investing in high-quality supervision, but spending a hell of a lot of time mentoring people, apologies for the word. And so we spend a lot of time mentoring the trainer to be just as good as us if we can get it there. Now, say for the, similar to other interventions that we do, we do have to be a touchstone. So we just, we'd love to say you don't need us anymore because we don't want people to have to spend tax dollars on an ongoing project, which is, you know, we hope you find it quite worthwhile because we've put in a lot of effort into this. But we will be touchstones that we can keep coming back, you know, how do we avoid drift? And that means a lot of individualized or group supervision. And sometimes supervision is a little tough. It's not that easy to get through. So it's, when we ever take a mentee or mentor on or a whole group on, it's our names, it's our reputations, as well as your reputation, so it has to be quite good. Hopefully that answers your question, but it's a lot of coming back and if the drift is really not so great, it's worthwhile that we stay in touch quite often and then after the end of year three or two and a half, we meet together and say, it's really drift, everybody's doing their own thing, and then we have to really pull the reins. But we don't, we hope it doesn't get to that point.
In reading your report, I read the narrations of the various community members and I was quite alarmed at some of the trauma that was discussed in that report. And I'm wondering, how big of a lift is this? I mean, what I read coming from our community and the work that you're saying you're going to do, how do we address some of the trauma that I clearly read in that report? how do we address some of the trauma that I clearly read in that report?
Yeah, there is significant trauma history here and just a history of things not going well in the communication. And so this is a lift, and we will all do it together. And I think we can get somewhere.
And just to add on to that, it's multi-level, right? So anytime we do go in with a community in a style of intervention, it's not a panaceo, it's not going to, you know, it's not snake oil. This is just one layer that we have to attack that will actually help with more community help. And we'd like to say for indigenous community, but we're just thinking we kind of all boats rise on this one. Since it's not just completely generalized just to indigenous communities. If we were to speak to specifically just indigenous communities in historical trauma, we would love to keep that conversation going on, what else we can do to heal that because there's many other wonderful interventions specifically focused on just that. But that does take some time. There's some really excellent work being done on that. We're doing some of it. Some of our colleagues in different universities are doing the same thing. We're all kind of connected to see who's doing what in Indian country. But that one, we do need to do something a little bit separate just for historical trauma. Thank you. It's not, it's quite complex.
Do we have any more questions? I just want to thank you guys for coming here. I know it's not an easy trip to end the summer. I hope you got to enjoy the Southampton a little bit today. So we're looking forward to working with you guys over the next few years here and implementing this stuff and hitting the ground on it. So I'm excited. Thank you guys for coming out and doing this in an August day.
Sure thing. Thank you for time.
We have one more presentation here. I think Darren's hiding back there. There he is. Let's come in and talk about video sponsorship proposal with our scoreboard that we have on the field. Darren, it's all you.
Okay. So obviously, the video board has been a great addition to our turf field out there. It's really been amazing. Sean Zay's been phenomenal. The kids have been great designing everything. And we get so many comments when other schools come and see the board. So one of the ideas I had was to take advantage of the school board by reaching out to the community for sponsors. The money that we would get from the sponsors would be used to feed our athletes, starting with our varsity kids this year. We have many teams that play double headers, field hockey, volleyball, basketball. There's probably a few more. And as you know, some of our kids eat lunch at 11, 11:30. They get on the bus. So the idea is we raise money using the video board. We create an account in the business office with Jean. The coach, the day before the game, with the Google Sheet to regain how many bad lunches or protein bars or whatever we need to give the kids.